Rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Miller, could you please call the roll?
Chairman DiMaria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht.
Here.
Mr. Bushnell. Mrs. Kiefer.
Here.
Mrs. Purdy.
Here.
Mrs. Sebeski.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Torres.
Here.
Ms. Maddock.
Here.
Dr. McGorke, are there additions and deletions to the agenda?
There are. There is a budget transfer and personnel addendum to the consent agenda and a closed session added at the end of the agenda.
Thank you. Superintendent's announcements and spotlights.
Yes, tonight we're going to be recognizing some of our staff members.
Now?
Thank you, Dr. McGorke. Chairman DiMaria, good evening, other members of the board, and good evening to everyone who has joined us on tonight. And as Dr. McGorke said, we do have a few staff recognitions that we would like to bring to your attention tonight. We are going to start with our service awards for Manassas City Schools. We want to honor several of our employees for completing 20, 25, 30, and 35 years of service with Manassas City Public Schools. So we're going to start with our 20-year employees. From Round Elementary, Maria Aguirre. From Round, Cheryl Alexander. From Mayfield, David Boyd. From Mayfield, Brian Florack. From Osborne, Rodrick Garrett. From Hayden, Michelle Green. From Dean, Jennifer Hash. From Baldwin, Connie Judd. From Osborne, Ann Kulakowski. From Osborne, Alyssa Love. From Transportation, Shondi Mills. From Hayden Elementary, Vanessa Mueller. From Round, Barbara Faino. From Baldwin, Dennis Parkin. I think I saw Dennis. From Round, Brenda Wamboldt. And from Osborne, Carol Woodbeck. Okay? All right. Our 25-year employees, from Dean, Susan Post. From Round, Diane Ramsey. From Round, Anne Marie Stevens. From Dean, Elizabeth or Tracy Voels. From Osborne, Timothy Weaver. And from Mayfield, Sharon Weber. Okay? For 30 years, from the central office, Jeffrey App. From Osborne, Carolyn Cogan. From Osborne, Catherine Dias. From Weems, Elizabeth Gary. From Hayden, Cynthia Klein. From Round, Beth Kurtzman. From Metz, Robin Roy. From Round, Jan Schultz. From Transportation, Betty Strickland. Those are our 30-year employees. And then finally, with 35 years of service to Manassas City Public Schools, from Osborne, Robin Albrecht. And from Metz, Jean Holden. Congratulations to all of you for your service to Manassas City Public Schools. I think he's gonna... Kind of scoot over that way a little bit.
One, two, three. One more one.
Next, we would like to shine a spotlight on our outstanding beginning teachers. The Outstanding First Year Teacher Award was created to recognize teachers who have entered their first official year as a contracted teacher. The recipient must have exceptional instructional practices for a beginning teacher. They must motivate and positively impact their students, as well as parents and colleagues. They should be professional, had noteworthy accomplishments in their first year, and possess long-range potential to contribute to the teaching profession. Outstanding second- and third-year teacher awards are given to those who continue in the program and exhibit the characteristics outlined for beginning teachers. The recipients are selected by their peers. Each is being recognized by their school site in recognition of exceptional instructional practice, dedication to the improvement of education, and a motivating professional presence that positively impacts students, parents, and colleagues. We begin with our Outstanding Beginning Teacher Year One nominees. From Baldwin, Chloe Mixelvic. From Hayden, Faith Hollinger. From Round, Melanie Dean. From Weems, Courtney Nellis. From Mayfield, Kim Urban. From Metz, Joanna Lacone. And from Osborne, Martin Garfield Levine. This next person is the 2016 Outstanding Beginning Teacher in their first year for Manassas City Schools, from Dean, Taylor Forgave. Congratulations to all of our first-year teachers. Yep?
You know how all first-year teachers are here?
Yes, they are. Wah wah.
And they're tall. All right, one, two, three. One more one.
Thank you. And now we move on to our second-year teachers. From Baldwin, Becky Bowen. From Dean, Fawn Rivenbar. From Round, Samantha Beard. From Weems, Jen Tulley. From Metz, Tammy Wong. From Osborne, Rebecca Apple. The 2016 Outstanding Beginning Teacher in their second year for Manassas City Public Schools is Lauren Funkhauser from Hayden. Y'all come over here. I know. And our Outstanding Beginning Teacher in their third year, our nominees are, from Baldwin, Stephanie Engelwright. From Dean, Megan Garner. From Hayden, Ellen Gamble. From Weems, Zvika Zlativa. From Metz, Roland Adam. From Osborne, Tricia Vamosi. Got to keep everybody in order, right? Okay, good. And the 2016 Outstanding Beginning Teacher in their third year for Manassas City Schools is Erin Coffrin from Mayfield. I think she couldn't be here tonight. Okay. Thank you. Having strong mentors to lead our beginning teachers is vital to their success. They assist new teachers with their growth and development and help orient them to the school community and to teaching in general. Mentor teachers also provide collegial and emotional support to new teachers. Each mentor is being recognized for their exceptional commitment and support of novice teachers, their dedication to the improvement of education, and a motivating professional presence that positively impacts students, parents, and their colleagues. Our outstanding mentor nominees for this year, from Baldwin, Jennifer Mullen. From Jenny Dean, Debbie Smith. From Round, Tina Bachelor. From Weems, Julie Wirzba. From Mayfield, Krista Kellis. From Metz, Kathy Hassanzadeh. From Osborne, Alan Fadazo. And our 2016 Outstanding Mentor for MCPS, Sheston McMahon from Hayden. Oh, scoot over a little bit. Good, thank you. The Mary V. Buchavara's Teacher of the Year Program honors educators who represent the best in teaching in the Commonwealth of Virginia and in the nation. The program provides school divisions the opportunity to recognize outstanding teachers and to focus positive public attention on education and the teaching profession. The program is open to all teachers, including school librarians, technology specialists, guidance counselors, and reading specialists. Our candidates are educators who are exceptionally skilled and dedicated and who also inspire students of all backgrounds and abilities to learn, have the respect and admiration of students, parents, and colleagues, play an active and useful role in the community as well as in the school, are poised and articulate, and possess the energy to withstand a taxing schedule. The 2016 MCPS Teacher of the Year and our nominee for the Mary V. Buchavara's Virginia Teacher of the Year Award is Jeffrey Osborne from Hayden Elementary School. I've known Mr. Osborne for a very long time. He's a very humble man. Look at him, he wants to get away already. But I need to say something about you first, okay? Jeffrey Osborne is a first-grade teacher at Hayden. For over 15 years, Mr. Osborne has been noted as having a unique and consistent method to illustrate a caring but firm approach to bring out the best in every child he comes in contact with at MCPS. His nominators say he is keenly aware of his students' various strengths and weaknesses and provides lessons that challenge the individual child. Under his guidance, students routinely see themselves as their own best advocate for learning because he instills in them a desire to achieve. His fellow colleagues say students continue to regard him with reverence and gratitude, claiming him as, quote, "one of their best teachers ever," long after they leave his classroom. Additionally, Mr. Osborne is noted for helping students develop a sense of citizenship, responsibility, and accountability. Outside of his classroom, Mr. Osborne spends time with his daughter and volunteers in the community and his church. He enjoys spending time working and fundraising for area youth groups and food banks. Mr. Osborne and our other division nominees for the award were honored at a recent ceremony at All Saints Catholic Church on the evening of May 9th. Congratulations to you, Mr. Osborne.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Great job. Okay, support employees have often been called the unsung heroes of every school division. Each year, all Manassas City Public Schools nominate a staff member for the award based on their ability to support students, staff, parents, and MCPS facilities and programs, foster cooperative relationships with his or her colleagues, parents, and the community, contribute to the mission and the vision of the school system, and also demonstrate exceptional skill and dedication in his or her position. The 2016 MCPS Support Employee Excellence Award recipient is Katrina Ward from Jenny I guess she couldn't be here tonight? All right, so, we will... All of our nominees were recognized at a ceremony on May 4th at the Candy Factory in Old Town, so we salute all of them. And at this time, for our final spotlight, I'd like to call Ms. Sebeski down for a very
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we'd like to recognize our student liaisons. This completes our third year of having student liaisons serve on our school board. It was an initiative that we started because we really feel like the students needed to have a voice in the decisions that we're making. So, we think it's a great leadership opportunity for students, and our students have done a great job and have provided much-needed and guided input to our decision-making. So, in appreciation of that, I'd like to have Gabby Torres and Faith Maddock join me down here for a small token from the board to you to... As a token of our appreciation for your service this past year.
For those of you who don't know, Gabby will be attending James Madison University in the fall, Faith will be attending Osborne High School. And next up, next meeting will announce who the next year the candidates are going
Ms. Radford? We've completed?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Al Radford, she does a wonderful job. Before I continue, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jeff Brown. He is our... He will be our retreat facilitator. We will be having a retreat in June, and he's here to watch to see how well we work. Thank you very much for being here, Ms. Brown. We are now going to go on to board committee reports, and you all are more than welcome to stay, but this is normally where people that don't want to see this get up and leave.
It was not.
But we're more than happy to have you stay if you so choose, but it wouldn't be rude if you want to leave. And see, they wanted to leave.
Wow, you gave them the option.
See how much I thought of you? I signed. They stick together, and we had trouble.
You've got two of them. You've got...
Yeah, one of them's for the school and the other one's for the city.
Okay.
She's the winner.
Yeah, I just didn't realize. Okay, so, if you've ever been when this lady does morning announcements and the stuff she does with kids.
I like embarrassing, don't you? Thank you. We appreciate everything. That's all right. Okay, we will go on now. We have academics. Mr. Williams, any report?
No report this week.
Thank you. Policy, Ms. Sebeski.
No report.
Thank you. Educational support, Mr. Albrecht.
No report, sir.
Finance committee, Mr. Albrecht.
We did have a meeting right before this meeting, sir, and we get to the consent agenda, I'll make comments at that point.
Thank you. And nothing on personnel. We'll move on to board member comments. We'll start with Ms. Maddock.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to talk about SOLs that have been happening in the past. They started last week and they're going through this week and the next couple weeks until we get all the retakes going. So, everyone who's SOL teaching, taking... Everyone who's testing and proctoring, anything like that, thank you, and everyone for being patient and just, we're gonna, we're gonna get through it. I had two SOLs the last two days and I have one tomorrow morning, so, I get it. We're gonna get through it. And then, last but not least, since it's the end of the year, we're winding down and everyone's excited for the summertime, but remember, there's still a lot of information going out, so let's keep our ears open for any information going home to parents or anything that students are being told, just so we can end the year on a good note without any mayhem. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Torres?
Yes, I have, so. So, last week, I helped conducted interviews for the next person to fill this seat for student rep. And not only did I ask, I asked questions to the interviewer, interviewees, I guess, but I got asked questions myself. Two questions really stuck with me when I got home. One, what was my favorite part about the meetings? And two, how did I benefit from them? My favorite part of the meetings were the spotlights. I mean, usually we have, like, little kids, like, present little poems, they like sing songs, which is really cute, but I think it's just great that we recognize, like, the people in the community and, like, the staff and the students of all the good stuff they're doing and, like, encourage them to keep doing it. As natural problem solvers, we like to pick out the bad stuff, so, I think it's great, like, good shift and change to see the positive stuff. So, yeah, just a thought. A lot of senior events coming up, which is really exciting. Tomorrow's the... Kicks off, like, the second half of, or, I guess, the beginning, basically, of the senior events. We have Summa cum laude banquet tomorrow, and then we have graduation in, like, three weeks, so, really excited for that. Come out, cheer for me, maybe. Yeah, hope everyone enjoys the great weather, the sun is out, Memorial Day weekends this weekend, so, that's it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kiefer?
Thank you. I also want to echo congratulations to everybody who was honored here tonight. I think when describing... When Al was describing Mr. Osborne with reverence and gratitude, I think that can apply to everybody that stood up here tonight, who wasn't able to be here tonight but who was recognized, so, we express our reverence and gratitude to everybody. To the ladies on my left, thank you. It's been a great year. I think some of my best conversations and some of the greatest insights that I've gotten is by having the benefit of sitting over here on this side. So, I really appreciate all that you've given to me personally and the insight. And Gabby, I wish you the best. I know this board does, too. You're always going to come back here to Manassas City and be a part of what we do here as well. I, too, wanted to echo the SOLs. It's a lot, it's a lot of hard work, and it's a lot of hard work by a whole lot of people. So, we wish you all well. We thank you, teachers, proctors, staff, and most of all, the students who continue to make us proud. Lastly, I'm pretty short-winded tonight, believe it or not. I just want to say congratulations to our Osborne High School class of 2016. I think we sit up here like proud parents of all of our 7,000 kids, and every year, one of the best times we have is sitting at that graduation. So, being a proud parent of all the kids that are graduating, I say it's been fun watching the journey, and we continue to look forward to seeing our eagles continue to soar. So, I say congratulations and Godspeed to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Purdy?
Yes, so, I wanted to echo similar sentiments. Thank you to the students. I do think one of the best things that has happened to the board is that we have students. They ask really good, insightful questions, and they provide a perspective that those of us that can measure the number of decades we've been out of school might not pick up on. So, thank you, ladies. You've been a tremendous asset to our discussions and our decision-making. I do want to thank all of the folks and say congratulations to the folks that we recognized tonight. And I also want to send my regrets. I'm traveling again, and so, all those wonderful invitations that I've got, unfortunately, just about all of them through about the next two, three weeks, I'm going to have to decline. I'm going to be heading out day after tomorrow or tomorrow, I'm not sure when. I've got a lot of traveling. I'm going to be out of the country and then get back and then turn right around and head to the west coast, so, I'm going to miss the retirement ceremonies, the summa cum laude, scholarship and awards receptions and such. So, I want to say congratulations in advance for that. And because I am traveling, I just got back from the Middle East, and every time I go there, it's not fun. This time, we were getting ready to go out to dinner, and we got a call and said, "Don't go." They just had an IED incident. And so, it just sort of makes you, makes you realize what is so important about this holiday that's coming up on Monday. This is where we, we, you know, remember all of those who, you know, volunteer and give their lives to give us the quality of life and the liberties and the freedom. And one of the discussions that came up while I was over there, they were talking again about the fact that girls in so many of those countries aren't even allowed to be educated over there. And look at all of the women that were recognized tonight, and look how just incredibly blessed we are in this system. And so, as we go into our holiday weekend, just, just remember all of those who have served on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sebeski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to congratulate everyone that was recognized for their service for many years or excellent service that they have contributed to Manassas City Public Schools. You're very much appreciated and something that probably isn't maybe said enough, but you are, every single one of you appreciated, but especially tonight when we're here to recognize you. I'd like to also tell Gabby that the spotlight is probably our favorite time, too. It's always great to hear the wonderful things that are going on, especially when the children are here, so it's good to know that that was your favorite time as well. I'd like to thank both of you for, for your service. I've been involved in this process from the beginning and getting it going. For those of you who don't know, student representatives are not on every school board. Princeville County, for instance, has not chosen to do this. It's just something that some school boards choose to do and some do not for various different reasons. some school boards choose to do and some do not, for various different reasons. And I'm really proud and really happy that this board saw the value in it three years ago, and I think that we've been grateful that we've decided to do this ever since. But more so, I hope that each student that it serves here finds a lot of benefit. I see both of you having grown with your leadership skills and your ability to speak in public, and those are very important skills you go through life with no matter what things you might do. So, thank you for giving of your time to come and help us make good decisions. Couple of news flashes, and for those of you who may not know, this Thursday night, the Manassas Education Foundation is putting on their Night of Excellence. It's a night to honor teachers and students for, that are getting scholarships. There's also going to be a K-12 art show going on, as well as a silent auction to raise funds for the Education Foundation. And the Education Foundation, that money goes back in scholarships or in teacher grants, that's what our Education Foundation does. They're, they have a lot of business partners that work with them. It's at 6:30 over George Mason in the Verizon Auditorium. Please stop by or come if you can, it should be a lovely evening and much work has gone into it by the, the people on the Education Foundation, a board that I happen to represent the school board on. Also, since we won't be having another school board meeting before graduation, that's on June 13th at Jiffy Lube Live, so congratulations to the class of 2016 from Osborne High School. I know you've been well-prepared to go into the community and do great things, whether you're staying here or going away to school, or going away to other jobs or the military, so congratulations and best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. First, I'd like to echo, congratulations for all the award winners, we appreciate all the work that you do. Secondly, I'd like to say that on Friday, May 13th, I attended ribbon-cutting ceremony at Manassas Kia to celebrate Operation KidSafe, a nationwide program to enhance child safety. Manassas Kia used that weekend to sign up kids and their families for KidSafe, and I thank them for doing that for our community. Last Friday, I attended the Baldwin movie night on the Manassas Museum Lawn. Kim Nguyen, I hope I pronounced her name correctly, who's sitting right here, the Baldwin PTA put it on, and it was fabulous. There were tons of kids running around, Robin was there, I see Robin out there, Councilman Lubjo was there, Ms. Kiefer, Ms. Sebeski, there were tons of Osborne kids playing football, soccer, frisbee with the Baldwin kids. Their robotics team was there with popcorn, I see Mr. Frederick there, one of their advisors, and it was just a wonderful community event. I mean, if you talk about community events and the synergies between all our schools and students and the community, this was it, so this was wonderful. So, thank you for putting that on, and for those of you who haven't seen that or experienced it, watch out for the movie night next year, because it was really fabulous to be a part of. I also attended the Osborne Girls Lacrosse Team last game, they lost in the playoffs, but they made regionals, so congratulations ladies and to their coach. And finally, that's a pure kind of melancholy, because I've been thinking about something the last week or so. This is not about politics, so don't take it the wrong way, but Bob Bennett, who was a Republican Senator from Utah, three-term Senator, 18 years, died recently, and there was an article that touched me, I shared with my wife, and she thought it was really interesting, that when he died, one of the things he told his son and his wife was that he wanted to apologize to every Muslim that he met, because he felt that he didn't want them to feel like they weren't Americans, that they were part of the community. And it touched me because of the compassion, the respect, the integrity he showed for others. And that's something that seems to be missing in our discourse, and the reason why it affected me also, I think, is that the last couple of weeks I've gotten some calls and some emails, and my wife in her office had some patients talk to her and had some teachers talk to me about, you know, the school system and how people are perceived. And what bothered me about that was that people don't realize how hard people in the school system work. Our teachers, our administrators, our support staff, our central office staff, they work hard and they care. We care, we wouldn't do this if we didn't care. So, we can have differences, we can think things should be a different way, but one thing I respected of what Bob Bennett did was that he always tried to find the common ground. He always looked at someone else, tried to understand where they were coming from. He may not agree with them, but he tried to understand who they were, what they were about, and respected their opinion and what they did. And I hope that as we go forward and we try to make a better Manassas and a better MCPS, because we have things we need to improve upon, no doubt, no one's saying this is, you know, utopia, but we all have things we're going to work on, we need to take criticism, and we need to learn from it. But don't forget that no one is here just for the heck of it. We are here because we care, we respect each other, we respect our community, and want the best for our kids. So I hope that as the school year ends and we move on to the summer and move forward, that people don't lose sight of that fact. And I want to thank everybody up here for the passion that they have for the community, our superintendent for the passion she has for our students, and our staff for the passion they show every day. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Albrecht?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Echo some of my peers' comments to our almost-future graduates, it's not real until the 13th, right? So I feel remiss if I didn't at least echo what Mrs. Bender needs to say there, so keep doing the good stuff, guys, and you will graduate. And best of luck as you continue your life, whether it's going into military service, going on and pursuing your education, or entering the workforce. The one thing I hope we've instilled in all of our graduates is the need for lifelong learning. It doesn't stop now, and even for those of us that are a little more senior up here, it still hasn't stopped. And I think the comments that were made to our school board representatives from the high school, we continue to learn from you all, and thank you and good luck to you next year, and as it goes forward. With that, sir, in the interest of brevity and looking at the time, I think I'm done.
Thank you, sir. I love having everybody talk before me, because then I don't have to say a whole lot. So do y'all, huh? What I do want to say is to Ms. Maddox and Ms. Maddox and Torres, Mrs. Sebeski's right, we learned from you as much as you learned from us, hopefully. I know I learned more from you probably than you learned from me. And the amount that you've grown this year has just been incredible, and I'm very proud to share this bench with you guys. You've done a wonderful job, and I look forward to your future and how bright it is for both of you. So, as far as the class of 2016, I will have the honor of addressing them at graduation, and hopefully I don't mess that up too bad, so I'll hold my comments on that. And the liaisons are critically important to us, and I, Mrs. Sebeski touched on that. What she didn't touch on is that the reason she gave the gifts to them is she's the reason they're up here. She pushed it, we weren't too sure about it, I know I wasn't too sure about it, aren't these little kids up here, you know, messing everything up? But I was wrong, and Mrs. Sebeski was right, and so I'd like to thank you for putting our ladies here, and gentlemen that we've had as well. I really appreciate your initiative on doing that. Okay, we will move on to citizens' comments. I have one here, do I have one there? Okay. The first one I have is Chris Montanez. Here, we'll put that down in case somebody else signs up. If anybody else would like to speak that has not signed up, if you could please make your way down there and see Mr. Hawkins, and he will sign you in there so that we can keep this rolling. Sir, your name and your address, please.
Christopher Montanez, 8612 Terrace View Court, Manassas, Virginia 20110. Board, thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. My name is Christopher Montanez, I am one of the more rambunctious members of the Manassas Parent Leadership Academy. One of the great experiences that I had as part of this was the school tours. And due to some time constraints, when we first went out, I wasn't able to spend the amount of time I wanted to spend at some of the places, so I decided to go on my own and just to visit a couple of our places, and something struck me. And as we know, bad news travels fast, but good news doesn't travel fast enough. So I, my first, the first school on my list was Metz Middle School. And I was really struck when I walked in, blown away actually, because there was a program that, that was presented to me that, that I think should be emulated everywhere. Kids cannot learn if they are hungry. And one of the programs that was instituted by a student named Jonae Thornton over at Metz was the Second Breakfast Program. And this is a program where at some point during the morning, these children get to come out and get a second snack, or a snack during the middle of the day before their lunch. I spoke to a couple, teachers spoke to a couple students. This is a big deal. For a student to bring the issue up showed that it was a problem for her. So this is something that, that I would like to recognize, the staff over at Metz Middle School and this child for bringing this program to light. My visit to Metz was amazing, I got to spend time with four teachers, four incredible teachers who, whose energy was infectious, and it was just an incredible experience. The principal was more than accommodating, and Metz Middle School is no different than any school in America. There are rambunctious kids, there are enthusiastic students, there are energetic teachers, and there are some people who are just cranky, and sometimes it's like that. But I want to say that it was one of the greatest pleasures that I've had. Both my stu, my kids went through Metz, Osborne, and Weems, and it was just a great experience. And I would like to recognize the principal and the students over at Metz for, for a great, great experience and a great program with the Second Breakfast Program.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Bushrau Thompson?
Good evening, my name is Sandra Bushrau Thompson, I do not live in the city of Manassas, I work for you. I have no script tonight, because I thought I had some time. I'm speaking tonight to thank Mrs. Purdy for all that you have done for us. I wasn't here last week, I did see your video where you said you would not be returning. I thought because it said July 1st, I'd be able to come back in a couple of weeks and tell you thank you for listening, for your discernment and your thought into what we're doing in our processes here in the city of Manassas. So I want you to know that we recognize all that you have done for us, and thank you, Godspeed.
Thank you. Vito, I'm not going to try the last name, Vito. But I'll let you say it.
Vito Ilacqua. So I'm here tonight mostly as a, as a parent, and I read in the press and blogs and other things some concerning news about two weeks ago, Ms. Purdy's, at least what's reported is that Ms. Purdy essentially resigned in protest citing concerns with ethical standards and controlling the message, I think those were the words that I read used. And so I've grown rather fond of this school system and this board, and of getting to know you and your activities so far, I've gotten a rather different perception, particularly in terms of transparency, and so I really was wondering if in the intervening weeks, anything has developed, if Ms. Purdy stands by her message, if there is any comment from the board on the issues that led to this rather concerning event for, and so that's the first question. And the second on that is if anything that led to this event is, is, is true and the reason, in fact, a significant problem, is there anything that the board would like to ask the community to do? Is there any way that we can help to address these problems? Thank you.
Thank you. We could be in touch with you at a later date, Vito, we don't converse at this point, but thank you very much for your questions, we appreciate that. That's all, I've got signed up, is there anyone else? Okay, thank you all. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Chair, move the school board of the city of Manassas, adopt the consent agenda as modified?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sebeski, is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Sir?
Following, Vito, thank you for being a straight man, talking about transparency. I mentioned earlier, we did have a finance committee meeting before this. The addition to the consent agenda, just for the full board's edification, and it did pass, Mr. Williams and I did get through the finance committee 2-0. Couple of additions to it in the sum of $322,502, underruns from existing capital improvement projects, staying within the capital improvement fund. We're able to accelerate some programs, as well as do some, some increases to things we might not otherwise have done, specifically in the areas of parking, paving, security, and lighting. Affected schools include Osborne, Dean, Mayfield, and Weems. So I think that really talks to the significant effort our staff does, how they work together, how they've been able to complete our projects on time, on budget, and we're able to repurpose those dollars to get even more done.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sebeski.
Ma'am? When I was looking at it again, is the May 10th meeting, when it's not supposed to be on here? The May 16th is on the consent agenda, and the April, I think 26th, but the last time I looked, which I just checked again before I came to the meeting, the May 10th was missing, so I don't know if that was just an oversight or if they're not ready?
It's not an oversight, they just were signed this evening.
Okay.
So they will be added to the...
Next meeting? Thank you for being on top of that, both of you. We appreciate that. I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sebeski, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry 6-0. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Discussion agenda, the 2017 and 2018 technology plan. I assume, Mr. Barrett?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, Dr. McGaw. Thank you for having me tonight to present the 2017, 2018 educational technology plan. Let me apologize in advance for my voice, I've been ill for the past couple of days, but I'm excited to be here for this opportunity. Are you controlling?
I will.
What is a technology plan? The goal of any technology plan is to serve as a strategic tool to give an organization an understanding of where, where you're at currently, and where you want to be somewhere in time, at some point in the future, as well as, in terms of infrastructure and technology. And it's been a learning process for, for us this past year, as we put together a technology committee, and we began to assess exactly where we're at, where we want to go, the direction we're moving in. Just a reminder of our strategic plan goals, goal five, strategies one and two there. And then I want to talk about the technology support team. We are a two, two-house division, if you will. We have an instructional technology team that's under the direction of Dr. Saunders, and specifically under the direction of Mr. Pedro Hernandez, who's in the back with me tonight. His team is the Instructional Technology Support Specialist, or I'm confusing, Instructional Technology Training Specialist, excuse me, ITTSes. We have one of which at each of our schools that serves as a member of the staff and really focuses on getting that training that the teachers and the students need for the, the technology. And then our information technology side, which is under my department and under the direction of Mr. Robert Santone, who is also here, and I'd like to thank both gentlemen for being here tonight, who oversee the technology support specialists. We have six of those serving at the schools, as well as some key engineering staff that serve at central office. And so as a result of all this, we've produced a 94-page technology plan, give you a little bit of light reading. But it's a snapshot of, at least in our opinion, and through all of our work, a snapshot of where we're at today, kind of where we've come from. The last technology plan was created in 2000, spring of 2011. A lot has changed in the world of technology in five years, and so we wanted to bring that up to, just to be, I'm very proud to have been a part of that, to be able to produce it. There's certainly opportunities for improvement, as this is my first shoot at it, and I'm confident that with the staff and with the stakeholder support that we've got, we'll continue to refine it year after year. And before I get into that, I want to talk about some of the accomplishments of this team since 2011, and they're too numerous to list everything. I tried to break them up from instructional technology side and then information and technology side, can you go back one slide? From the instructional technology side, we introduced the K-12 STEM... Uh, from the instructional technology side, uh, we introduced the, the K-12 STEM, uh, program. And I, when I say we, it's, it's a collective effort, a lot of the folks over here. Um, there was no STEM program, uh, in 2011. Uh, and so now the entire K-12, uh, project plan has been created. Um, it's in the process, it's a continual process of implementation. We now have a project lead the way, uh, program at our schools, uh, engineering programs and, and certain classes. Uh, they're using Autodesk, AutoCAD software. Um, we've introduced some 3D printers, uh, into the mix and all the associated technologies that go along with that. We've introduced integrated, um, uh, online textbooks, digital curriculums, web-based resources, um, that are available to staff and students on a variety of devices. We've launched Google Apps for Education. We signed an agreement with Google, um, and we introduced that at the high school level. And this past year it was, uh, introduced at the middle school level. So all students, grade seven through 12, have a Google, uh, what we call a walled garden. It's our own Google environment. Uh, all students have a, an email account. They have a Google Drive. Um, those things are essentially managed. Uh, excuse me. The teachers are able to utilize the Google Classroom, um, learning management system. Uh, offered them a lot of integrated tools and assessment, uh, type of, of activities. Uh, we provided classroom, uh, based technologies in a strategic manner. Uh, by the end of this summer, more than 125 new projectors, uh, a lot of them interactive, will have been installed in our schools. We've replaced a lot of aging, uh, software. We've introduced, um, document cameras and several, several other devices, um, that highlight the interactivity, uh, of these curriculums, uh, for our teachers. We've established, uh, division-wide licensing of Smart Notebook. When I got here 18 months ago, um, our teachers were using Smart Notebook, Promethean and Epson, um, software to create their lesson plans. Uh, and, and you couldn't take one from the other, they couldn't share. Uh, we sent, signed an agreement with Smart and got last year and bought that, uh, unification, uh, division-wide. Uh, this past year, we introduced digital content creation stations at all of our schools. Excuse me. They're standalone, high-end computing resources, uh, that are available to all of, of our stakeholders, their, our teachers. The ITTS oversees that and, and they're, they're there to produce digital content, not print content and anything we're gonna print out, but digital content. Uh, and it's, it's being put to, to use with the Adobe Captivate, uh, which is the, one of the gold standards of virtual instruction. We have a Virginia Star program, uh, now not only at Osborne, but also at the Metz Middle School, where our students are refurbishing computers and, and redistributing those to needy families, uh, and partnership, uh, through, uh, needy folks, uh, in, in need of these computers. Online testing. Over the past five years, we've fully transitioned everything to web-based, interactive online testing from SOLs, uh, to the access to interactive achievement. So far this, uh, this school year, this spring, SOLs are running, uh, quite smoothly. We haven't heard too many incidents, which is really a testament to our staff and what they've been able to put in place. Uh, we've transitioned to a blended learning, uh, professional development environment. Blended learning is, uh, has an online component and has a human teacher component. Led by Dr. Saunders, uh, Pedro and Ms. Wagner, uh, we're partnering with Better Lesson, uh, to bring a blended strategy, uh, for our teachers. Uh, we're, our school system is partnership with the North Tier Partnership, which is a conglomerate of 13, uh, regional, uh, institutions. Uh, we had a conference here in the summer last year, uh, a professional development conference. Excuse me. We also have a, a Google Ninja, uh, program. That's fun to say, uh, at the high school, which trains our, our teachers on how to become prolific at, uh, Google Apps for Education tools. Uh, we were able to, uh, bring our ITTS ratio to a one-to-one for our schools. Um, five years ago, we, we, we had six ITTSs. Uh, the coordinator position, uh, prior to my getting here was vacant for a long time from an instructional technology standpoint. And not only has Mr. Hernandez, uh, been brought in, but his position has also been expanded to, uh, include, to become, his title of Supervisor of Digital Instruction and Innovation. So it's, it's, it's enlarged. We've improved communication to stakeholders. We're trying to, our, every turn to, uh, try to get word out on what it is we're doing. We provided revisions to our operating procedures. Um, we, uh, both of our teams together collaboratively, collaboratively, uh, have produced a quarterly newsletter that we send out to the division. Um, we've been getting a lot of great feedback on that. Our ITTSs are our website curators, uh, for our school websites and also have led to our teacher webpages, uh, where they're able to post, uh, information about their classes. And then finally, we launched a, a Tech for Home, uh, program. As of right now, it's, it's, uh, based on our, our homepage website, uh, from the IT side and it, it profiles and details some free and reduced cost technology, hardware, software and services that are available exclusively to MCPS stakeholders. From, uh, information technology side, um, one of our goals was to get to a two-to-one or better, uh, student to instructional computer ratio. When I say instructional computer ratio, that's any computer in our inventory system, uh, that's, that's labeled an I. So that could be, uh, a computer, individual computer in the classroom, that could be a card of computers, it could be a library, uh, computer accessible to students. We were able to accomplish that, uh, in, in last fiscal year. Um, we've, and in doing so, we implemented a computer replacement program. We now have a six-year lifecycle on our computers. Uh, when I first got here, we had computers that, that were 12 years old and older. Um, I'm happy to report now that nothing is older than six years. Uh, we've deployed 2,000, uh, e-learning backpack, digital tablets, uh, in the past couple of years. We're gonna add 600 more this summer to the rising freshmen. And so at, at the current moment, at the K through six level, we're averaging a 1.76, um, student to instructional computer ratio. At Metz, we're down to a 0.85 and a lot of that is because of some blended learning, um, additional computer hardware that was provided this year and things that are in transition, uh, to realign those. And then at the Osborne, with the addition of our, uh, tablets for everybody, we're down to a 0.77. And again, that includes, uh, pretty much every computer, uh, in the building, but we are at that two-to-one or better. Uh, we've revolutionized our support model for our, our schools. Uh, we introduced an IT, uh, ticketing system, web-based ticketing system that, uh, brings all of our support ti- tickets, uh, to us. We now have remote assistance capabilities. Uh, we're able to deliver instant, um, instant support, uh, no matter where we're at. Uh, we've worked to have a real-time inventory up to date. Uh, we use a product called TrackIt and most of the technology items in the division are now barcoded and tracked. Any Windows-based device automatically reports to us, um, into this system. It gives us a real good snapshot of where we're at. Our CIP, uh, plan, we've established a sustainable plan for technology infrastructure. Uh, we're now on the five-year, uh, next five-year forecast, uh, to, and we've got a strategic, uh, plan to replace network infrastructure in a timely manner, in a cyclical manner, so it doesn't creep up on us all at once. Uh, the network has been completely overhauled, um, in 2011. I was not here, uh, in the days of the, the flat network of her stories of, uh, days gone by, uh, but our entire domain infrastructure was switched from Novell to Microsoft Active Directory. That's a monumental task in itself, um, which brought along Exchange email server, uh, email archiving. Uh, and we now have a robust routing environment, uh, and we've replaced the entire network infrastructure this past year at both Osborne and Metz with new, new hardware. Our wireless, uh, went from just a handful of access points to now more than 470, um, and we're pretty much built out. More is not better with wireless, there's only so much radio frequency, um, so we're fine-tuning it. Uh, those numbers will go up with new Baldwin and Baldwin intermediate and then we're keeping up with the changing radio standards, uh, that, that change with our, our devices. The internet, our internet had, since I've been here, we've increased it 900%. Um, this went from 50 megabits per second to currently we're at 500. Uh, and now we're, we're getting ready to explore, um, raising that again in the next fiscal year, possibly to 700, uh, in order for us to keep up the man with all these digital resources that we're, we're pouring into the division. Uh, we've introduced virtualization into the data center. We didn't have any virtualized servers, uh, just a couple of years ago. Now we have more than 50, uh, that are there. Um, it's reducing our carbon footprint, it's reducing our power consumption, our cooling requirements to central office and our data center. Uh, we've also introduced some advanced, advanced device management. We have an Apple mobile device management system, all of our iPads now essentially, um, managed. Uh, it's saving a lot of man-hours for us to push out applications. And in this past spring, we've also introduced our, uh, Microsoft System Center Configuration Manager, SCCM, um, which automates a tremendous amount of tasks. We can now deploy hundreds of new machines, uh, overnight by just simply uploading a, a script. Um, it's estimated it's gonna save us about 350 man-hours in the coming fiscal year with these, um, with these innovations. All the copier machines were replaced in the division, well, just last spring. And with it came a new print management system that right now is, is tracking to save us approximately $30,000, uh, in this fiscal year in, in printing costs. Uh, we've worked, uh, we've got a great partnership with, um, Mr. App's, uh, team at, uh, facilities and maintenance, uh, working with them each and every month. And we've expanded IP-based security cameras, uh, door locks, now HVAC systems, we're both wired and wireless devices now, uh, for the building automation are there. And then finally, uh, prior to me getting here, but, uh, since 2011, the technology service department is no more. We now have an information technology department, instructional technology team, and that entire, uh, organizational, uh, model has, has shifted a little bit to better meet the needs of our stakeholders. But I just wanted to highlight a lot of the work that's been done, um, not by me, but by this team, um, that's, sits behind me, many of them and the ones out in the schools. With regard to this technology plan, uh, we started this process, and I'll go through the timeline next, but, um, last November, and we were anxious to get a lot of, a variety of stakeholder input. And I'll, I'll talk about some of the ways we've got that, but I just wanted you to see the list of more than 30 individuals who contributed, uh, to this plan and, and the parts thereof. Our timeline, back in November, we, we formed the technology committee. Uh, we began meeting on a monthly basis. Uh, we established a technology advisory board, or TAB as we like to call it, a, a charter. And, uh, meeting dates for the rest of the year were filled out. Uh, then we developed some subcommittees, and I'll talk about those in just a moment. Uh, elected chair folks and then the chair people, uh, filled their memberships for those subcommittees. Uh, January through April, in the winter months, uh, the subcommittees met, uh, with their focuses, uh, to work on the strategies, goals and objectives that we needed for this upcoming plan. Uh, we conducted a needs assessment survey, which, uh, in, in a couple of slides, I'll get into a little greater depth, uh, reviewed existing data of where we're at. And then the first draft of the technology plan was completed, um, last month for review. And this went through a couple of revisions, periods of revision. Uh, it was presented to executive cabinet, uh, last Monday, uh, and now we bring it to you at the school board level, uh, for discussion tonight and then, uh, hopefully, uh, action in the following meetings so we can send it on to Richmond, uh, by our June 30th deadline and it will go into effect July 1st of 2016. Our technology committee, I love this graphic, uh, and it shows the, the two parts and I gotta ask whether or not they should be side by side or overlapping, and they really overlap. Uh, the technology advisory board, it's not just, uh, some big forum that sits and, and legislates. Excuse me. Now, technology advisory board is a, is a group of, uh, key stakeholders that meet monthly, meet on the second Tuesday of every month. Uh, in the afternoon, our meetings are open. Uh, our minutes are published. You can go on our website and click the link and get to all the minutes. But it's this core team of, of department staff members, teacher representation, um, whose purpose was to create and review the technology plan, whose purpose will continue to be, as we meet monthly, to take a look at new and emerging technologies, to see what's out there, what's coming forward, uh, to see the initiatives that are going on at the schools and whether or not we can replicate those or whether or not they need to be suspended and our resources are utilized elsewhere. Uh, that we, we meet to establish our short-term and long-term goals, uh, for MCPS and eventually we want to get to the point where they're gonna review, uh, the technology budget proposals that come forth and we'll decide as a committee, uh, what we bring before you, uh, for that final, uh, review. And then we have the subcommittee, uh, section. These are smaller groups that are chaired and one of the rules of our charter is the subcommittee has to be chaired by a member of the TAB. And they are able to fill their own membership, which they did, uh, through, through additional stakeholders and they work on a specific focus and a set of tasks that align with our educational technology plan. This past year, we had four, uh, subcommittees. One was assessment and accountability, uh, one for curriculum integration, one for professional learning and one for technology standards and support. And they will continue to exist and new subcommittees will spring up as we need them, as we need to focus on a specific area, uh, and get additional information. Uh, identifying needs. Rather than just a simple survey that a lot of districts send out and gather feedback on, uh, we wanted to expand it in our, in our assessment, uh, period. Uh, and again, this is a starting place. This is our first plan, at least under, uh, under my watch. Uh, one of the first things we did is we took a look at some of the past division surveys that have went out, surveys that went to students, to our staff, to our parents. In addition, we did do a fresh, uh, survey this spring to our teachers once again, uh, as well. And I anticipate this to become an annual, uh, survey, an annual opportunity to, we pull the stakeholders and get feedback on what's working and what's not and what, where the areas of improvement are. Uh, we took a look at our technology inventory management system. Uh, those reports provide us a wealth of information that's near real time on what's out there and we can identify our deficiencies, uh, quite easily. We're able to run reports, uh, to move forward in the, in, in our, uh, project plans of what we need in terms of classroom technologies, uh, computing resources. Our network and major systems inventory, in the same manner, um, those data center systems, uh, the network infrastructure equipment, we're able to maintain those life cycles, include those on a systematic, uh, replacement plan. Uh, professional development reports, uh, helps us identify where training has occurred, where more training is needed, uh, where our efforts, uh, should continue. Uh, the balanced scorecard metrics that are produced in the summer for, for the board, uh, show us, uh, obviously opportunities of improvement as well. And we took that feedback into account. And then finally, industry research and reports. Uh, as you know, in the world of technology, uh, it's changing, uh, every minute. Soon as you buy that smartphone, it's outdated tomorrow. Uh, it's, it's so in, in educational technology and trying to keep up, uh, in our world is, is quite difficult. So we rely on trade associations, trade publications, uh, vendor support and partnership. Uh, we just had a vendor in a couple of weeks ago talking about, uh, cloud-based storage, how we can expand our data center, uh, for disaster recovery and backup, um, and how we can leverage those types of technologies. Uh, and so we took a look at all of those things holistically to develop what it is we need and put together the matrix. And in addition, these are supported by MCPS's zero-based budgeting process. Uh, every fall, uh, the schools and departments submit a technology workbook with their wish list, with their needs, uh, based on their school or department. And then finally, uh, something we instituted this past year is, uh, our team is starting to do project assessment reviews. Uh, as requests come in for the latest and greatest technology, we're taking a look. Uh, may slow the process down a little bit, uh, but we take a look and, and make sure to see the, the impact it may have on student private, uh, data privacy and teachers' data, um, how it will interface with our network. We don't want to be buying something that, that's not gonna interface and cause us a lot of problems or two months' worth of troubleshooting to get to work. Uh, and so that process has helped us identify our needs as well. Uh, so in summary, this, this plan, uh, that we've developed, this 94 pages, uh, a lot of it appendices, which is good. Some of the past plans of MCPS have focused on equipment acquisition, uh, new techno- getting new technologies into our schools, uh, building network infrastructures, and that's great. This plan and its subsequent revisions are gonna build upon that work and we're gonna take it and utilize it to, to take it to the next level to try to transform the learning process. Uh, we're gonna take it to the, to the next step. In summary, our plan has five goals, uh, 11 objectives and 35 strategies. And as we progress forward, uh, the specifics of these strategies, they will start to, uh, come into view, the key success factors. Um, a lot of these will have their own project, uh, implementation timelines and project plans. We'll develop key performance indicator and we'll, we'll start to look at cost analyses. For the time being, we're gonna operate in our, uh, existing budget, uh, framework, uh, to achieve these goals. Uh, just a couple of the highlights. Uh, technology, we want to establish, uh, pre-K through 12 technology profiles, uh, for our classrooms and our schools. Um, that's been a goal of mine since I got here. I want to, I want to produce a report card for every classroom in our school system. Um, the, the standards and, uh, subcommittee has been working on this technology profile, uh, document that, that will say that, uh, a kindergarten classroom, uh, needs to have X number of iPads or X number of tablets, a document camera, wireless access point, those types of things. And we'll do that for every, every feasible classroom space out there. And then we'll run our reports against our inventory and we'll be able to produce the reports that show a delta. And our budget, uh, budgeting will be geared toward, uh, creating and a decrease in those gaps. Uh, we want to implement a student-focused learning content management system. We want students to be, and, and teachers to be able to have a 24 by 7 by 365, a digital learning ecosystem where they can go, uh, to not only learn, uh, but also where teachers can still teach, uh, where grades can be, uh, done automatically, assessments online, uh, and, and a, a method of communication. teach, where grades can be done automatically, assessments online, and a method of communication. We're introducing a digital citizenship curriculum this upcoming year with Internet Safety. I don't want anybody to be misinformed. We've had an Internet Safety Program since 2006, since the state has mandated, but we're now introducing a digital citizenship curriculum along with that that's going to focus training students on the proper utilization of all these resources that we're putting into place, show them how to take ownership for their actions in that environment, how to be responsible users, social media forums, being aware of the pitfalls out there on the Internet. Google Apps, I'm proud to announce that we're going to expand that down below the middle school. This upcoming year, we're going to push it down to Mayfield. All the fifth and sixth graders will get Google accounts. We're going to take a slightly different approach in some of our security measures. We're going to tighten them down a little bit tighter, and then in 2017, 2018 school year, we're going to push that down to grades three and four, and give those teachers an opportunity to utilize the Google Classroom environment, those online and integrated applications. We're going to work our hardest to continue this computer replacement program to keep our systems modern, so we don't get to where we have 12-year-old computers in our schools, to sustain this six-year lifecycle and environment for our students. And we're going to work to shift our existing devices into a manner that fits them, eventually with the ultimate goal, and we've not laid that out yet, of a one-to-one everywhere, or at least accessible, one-to-one division-wide. Our Professional Development, we want to continue our partnership with Better Lesson. We want to expand that for more staff. We are going to expand our ISTI, which is formerly the NETS standards, to include more teachers in the program. This past year, we had 19 teachers be able to participate, and we had at least another 19 that had to be turned away because we only had one evaluator. By the end of the summer, we will have five evaluators. We'll be able to expand that framework to more teachers in the coming year. We want to establish and identify building leaders at the school levels to model this 21st century teaching. The teachers who have already gone through the blended learning training, who will go through the training, to be those mentors and those leaders for the other teachers in our schools. This upcoming year, we're going to expand our technology support specialists by adding an additional position, and that's going to allow us to support the massive influx of computing components that keep coming onboard. This year alone, we've, the past two years, excuse me, we've either replaced or added 2,700 computers in our environment, and additional hundreds and hundreds of iPads, and as a result of that, we need additional support to keep those things operational. From an infrastructure perspective, we're going to continue with these systematic upgrades. We're going to do them strategically and cyclically, so we don't run out of our end-of-useful lifecycle unexpectedly. Unlike previous technology plan efforts, this Technology Committee will continue to function. We will continue into the coming years. We're going to continue meeting monthly. We'll continue to talk about the technologies as they come forth, as they change on a daily basis, and how we can work to better the school system. And finally, this technology plan, it will not be five years before you see me again. I will be here next year. We're going to provide annual revisions to the plan from here on out, at least while I'm here, to keep up the pace. And with that, I'd like to say that the 2017, 2018 Educational Technology Plan has been posted online. It's been up on our website for the past week on Let's Talk, and it will be, continue to be hosted there for public comment until next Tuesday afternoon, May 31st. We invite the public to make any additional comments. And with that, I will entertain any questions that might be.
Thank you, sir. I'm watching Jim and Pedro back there saying, "We're going to do what? By when?" Are there any comments, sir?
Just a couple of thoughts, Mr. Barrett. Thank you, because I think refreshing to me was how you just finished with, we're going to have annual surveys, and our plan is going to be updated annually, because the lifecycle of technology and what we see and how things are changing is just incredible. I was at a conference last week, and you know, it wasn't that long ago, you filled out a three-by-five card, you passed it to the aisle, someone took it to the front, and the moderator decided what question they really wanted to answer, which probably wasn't the one anybody asked, it was the one they were prepared to answer. And instead nowadays, they put it up there on Twitter, and you put your question up there, and you get to like it, and the most important one's the one that gets read, and it's like, wow! It's amazing how it's changed, you know? Five years ago, we were talking about computer-based training, computer-based instruction. Today, we're talking about blended learning. Who knows what we'll be talking about in two or three more years? So that need to constantly do the assessment is spot-on, and you hinted at some things when you started talking about technology assessments, project assessments, is thinking about it as service and not a program, because what we need to deliver those services is what's going to change. You know, just because we've always had a particular boat anchor in a classroom doesn't mean it needs to stay. What we need to focus on is what's the service we're trying to get, and what's it take to deliver that?
Correct, sir. Thank you, sir. Mrs. Partey?
This was a good job. I always enjoy whenever you come up, because I know we're going to hear a good story. So Bobby, I think it was a lot of hard work, and so now it's time for me to, like, do my mea culpa. I just haven't been in town long enough to have read the whole thing, so I kind of skimmed it and was looking for some specific things. So they may be in there, I just didn't see them in skimming through it, so I apologize for that. One of the things that I was particularly pleased about is you talked about increasing the bandwidth, and then you talked about that you're going to increase it again next year. Do you have a feel for kind of sort of what your margin is? Like, I don't know if you saw the publication just a couple of days ago, that, you know, across the country, the average usage has doubled in terms of bandwidth per digital device, and that's not even counting number of devices per person. So we know we've talked about the bring-your-own-device. You also mentioned that right now you've cut the obsolescence factor in half, 12 to six, but we are using tablets, and that tends to be on about a three-year cycle. So have you already sorted your way through that, or is that something that's going to be really, really tugged on in the next iteration when you talk about next year?
That's something that we'll continue to, yeah, still look at. To answer your question in terms of the bandwidth over the Christmas holiday, we went from 300 to 500 megabit, and that first week of January, we started to see a peak, a spike from here and there, out of 500. We've since introduced some additional technologies, and we've got a replacement system that's going to be implemented in the summer for our internet content filtering that will offer us some caching. I don't want to get too technical, but it stores some local files. Multiple users request the same file, doesn't have to go to the internet, it's got it locally. That's expected to save us about 20% of our bandwidth right there. It's built into this system that we're going to implement. Right now, if we build it, they'll come, these devices.
Kind of an ideal gas law of bandwidth.
Yes.
Any others?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Barrett, you and your staff for, this is a lot to have accomplished in a short period of time, but we were behind the bandwagon on technology. I know you had a lot of things that you had to kind of jump in as soon as you got here and try to correct, so that this could be done in the correct way, and even with that, you put committees in place and things that really allow for input from a lot of different areas. So I know that from your presentation, you don't feel you're there yet, but I want to commend you and your staff for all of the work that you have already done in a short period of time, and I agree with Mr. Albrecht. I look forward to the fact that we will get annual updates, so that this can be stayed on top of, since it does change so very, very quickly. So thank you again.
Thank you. Ms. Maddick?
Thank you. Just for some student feedback, I wanted to talk about, I have a few things that I, for Google, all our Google apps that we've been doing, I think it's fantastic, especially now that's going to be moving down to Mayfield. I use Google Classroom every single day, and I even downloaded the app on my phone, so every single time my teacher posts something, I'm getting the notification about my homework, about a test that's coming up. I think it's awesome. For the document cameras, I guess they're Elmos, that's what we call them. Those are awesome. I almost have them in every single one of my classrooms. There's a few that still don't have them, but I love those because of what, how my teacher usually, most of my teachers use it, is they write, aren't, they do the notes with us, so we're not going like PowerPoints anymore. They sit down, especially in my science class, I love it. She sits down and she writes the notes with us, so it's like we're doing it together, and I think that's a great use out of it, and so if I could have one of those in every one of my classrooms, that's awesome. That would be great. For online textbooks, this is my one little negative comment. This year, my only class that I have only an online textbook at home is my foreign language classroom. Everywhere else, in my science and all my other classes, I'm able to take like a textbook home with me, but in my Spanish classroom, I'm not allowed to take, it's been the new thing, they didn't have enough textbooks to take everyone home with one with us, so we're only allowed to use the online textbook at home, and I am not a fan of like how this online textbook is set up. It sounds weird because I'm so familiar with technology, but it's really hard to use. So just in, as we go forward, if it could be more user-friendly for the online textbooks, since that's the only textbook we're going to have at home.
Our next TAB committee, one of our agenda items is to discuss the textbook adoption process, digital curriculum, and so a lot of the folks you see here are going to be discussing that very thing.
Okay. Sorry, we created a monster down there. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Barrett, we appreciate it very much. Policy, school board policies. Ms. Sebeski?
Mr. Chair, the Policy Committee met on May the 10th and reviewed many policies. Most of them had minimal updates, but there were a few that the committee felt needed to come forward to the whole board for review. Those were sent out on Google Docs to the board, and I have had no feedback from anybody except for Mrs. Kiefer, and I think I answered your question, but no one else has sent anything to me, so I recommend that we move these on to the next meeting, to the consent agenda.
Okay. Any other comments on that?
Thank you, ma'am. New business, school board calendar. Mr. Di Maria?
Okay, that's me. The calendar in July, we approved, I need to get to it, so hold on one second, that our meeting would be on the, we were on the 19th, correct?
No, we were on the 12th.
We're on the 12th, and we'd like to move it to the 19th, in between the two dates that were scheduled to begin with, since we're only going to have one meeting. It works better for me, and it works better for the superintendent. I wonder if we have any feedback or problems with the 12th.
Start at 7:00? Because that's the Conference for Education, so for those of us probably, we need to get back to Richmond.
Well, that was the other thing, is that that's the way we've normally done it. Everybody's taken that day off anyway, so they could just continue on to the conference. Everybody okay with that?
Mr. Chair, do we need to start at 7:00? Mr. Albrecht, because we usually finish in Richmond by 4:00, so.
We could start, probably make it back by 6:00. I won't speak to anybody who's driving.
I'm riding with you, I know how you drive. So.
Damn, busted.
Yes, busted. I just, like you said, I don't know how much we're going to have to go over, since we, I don't know how much we'll accomplish with our retreat at the end of June. There may be more stuff that we need to accomplish on that night regarding our board goals.
Let's set it at 6:00, and if we don't make it, we'll just sit there and wait. Does that work?
That works for me.
Does that work for you?
I'm riding with you.
Would you like a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve a change to the Tuesday, July 12, 2016 regular school session, to Tuesday, July 19, 2016, as a regular business meeting at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sebeski, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the change of the July 12, 2016 regular business meeting to July 19, 2016 regular business meeting at 6:00. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 6-0. Okay.
I suspect someone down there didn't care.
Probably not. I suspect you still don't. We are ready for a closed session.
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2, 3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following purposes. Discussion of Personnel Matters, PERS 1516-2656 through PERS 1516-2658.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sebeski, that the School Board enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following purposes. Discussion of Personnel Matters, PERS 1516-2656 through PERS 1516-2658. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 6-0. Thank you all very much.